To order, city clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Morris.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Clerk Cohen, here.
All right, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Alderman Smith, would you mind leading us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Alderman Smith. All right, and then moving on to item C, approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Discussion at all? All right, roll call please.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Fantastic. Okay, we've got some public participation, but they're going to be during the items themselves when we discuss them. So at this time, I have no additional public participation. Moving on to agenda item E, presentations, we have none. And then agenda item F, appointments. So number one, appointment of Andre Powell to the Human Relations Commission for the completion of a three-year term through December 31st, 2023. Any questions or discussion, counsel? I've known Andre for a while, my barber for one. Just seemed like a good addition. We've had some vacancies. We do have some vacancies on some commissions, so I've been going around trying to find people and appoint them as we go along. So, okay. So with that, then moving on to appointment number two, we have public participation by Sasha Cohen. And as always, got to remind, three minutes is allotted time for public participation, please.
This latest appointment constitutes a continuation of a years-long effort by the city manager's office to consolidate the working powers of the city clerk under his own control. Beginning with the ordinance that was passed in 2019 and the attacks and slander against former clerk Fizikas, who was subjected to an improperly-held executive session that the city ended up having to release the audio of publicly rather than face the wrath of Illinois Attorney General's Public Access Counselor. Two weeks ago, another executive session was held to discuss my own performance. That executive session has already been made the complaint of two public access complaints through the Illinois AG's office, one of which is currently pending and one of which is moving through the beginning of the process. It is an attempt to subvert the will of the voters and effectively take away, without taking away on paper through the clever use of permitting the city clerk to continue taking minutes, eliminate the last remaining vestige of independent oversight that the city holds. I would also note that I have attempted to seek training to become a better municipal clerk, writing to city manager Bill Nicholas on August 27th of this year, requesting funding to attend the Municipal Clerks of Illinois training. I was told, it's too long to fit within the timeframe, but just a selection, "The fundamental prerequisite for public service is an open mind and a courteous approach. These virtues are not taught in a class, but are what we hope an elected official arrives with when they are elected. These attributes are more important than any technical expertise you might gain from the MCI Institute. In my humble opinion, your words and actions, while city clerk, do not inspire my confidence that you have the capacity to learn them. A case in point, by your own words, you have condemned an entire city department, the DeKalb Police Department, as, quote, 'bastards,' end quote. That is not open-minded or courteous." I would remind city manager Nicholas that the phrase "all cops are bastards" is a political expression and that it is not his role as an unelected bureaucrat to deny those who are elected to serve the public access to training and resources that can help them in that service as he is directed to by his contract and city ordinance on the basis of his objection to their political beliefs. I urge you not to pass this, and I urge you to respect the will of the voters. I would also like to point out that the process for the approval or disapproval of minutes has not been followed. The City Municipal Code in Chapter 2 states that meetings are to be governed by-
We're at three minutes.
...rules of order, which specifies a methodology for amendments, but not for rejection.
Thank you. All right. So appointments, item number two is the appointment of an executive assistant as recording secretary to the city council. Procedurally, the appointments are, we're just looking for council to head on and agree, city manager?
Yes, we'll bring this back as an ordinance.
Correct, in November 22nd.
But for the purposes of the recording of tonight's meeting, this is an alternative that council has.
So I guess I'm looking at council, nodding our heads to have them come back November 22nd with an ordinance stating such? Okay. Go ahead and then we'll review it at that time, city manager. Thank you. All right, moving on to item number G, the consent agenda. Yeah, I got to read it. So consent agenda, number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting as of August 23rd, 2021. Item two, minutes of the regular city council meeting of September 13th, 2021. Number three, minutes of the regular city council meeting of September 27th, 2021. Number four, minutes of the regular city council meeting of October 25th, 2021. Number five, minutes of the joint review board meeting of July 23rd, 2021. And item six, accounts payable and payroll through November 8th, 2021 in the amount of $1,844,977.22. I will take any sort of motion?
I'd like to make a motion to remove consent agenda items one, two, three, and four, since they were not submitted on time and we want to have time to review and approve them.
Okay.
Second.
So I have a motion by Alderman McAdams, a second by Alderman Verbic. Discussion? So hearing none, oh, yes, Alderwoman Morris.
I apologize, I was trying to get your attention for the appointment.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
But this feels just as fitting for, as we move on with this communication. So because it's a significant issue, I just want to say more about it as we are, as we are making this choice. Is it okay to speak to number two at this point? I don't, is that out of order?
I think it might go along with the consent agenda and we're removing those minutes. So if it's on topic to that, I'm looking at our city attorney. I assume we can have this discussion? Yeah, okay, I'm good.
So, yeah, I just want to note that the challenge that we're facing is that we have been receiving minutes that demonstrate a lack of skills, perhaps attention to detail, a lack of ability to edit, basic typographical errors that are substantial and significant and don't accurately record the history of our city council as it is happening. And so I believe that's our primary concern and why we feel it necessary to look at having another person appointed to also take those minutes. And it's really concerning. And so I think that the primary role of the clerk, in my view, and I think probably in many others' view, is to record the history of our city as it happens and the history of what we create here and now. And when that's inaccurate, it's a substantial problem for our city because we have no idea what happened. You know, we're fortunate today to have things like YouTube and the like, but those are platforms that we don't own and control and we don't have the power to ensure that those words are there forever for posterity. So that's why we're making these decisions. That's why we are considering, what we're considering with the consent agenda and with the minutes because there are substantial concerns that affect the history and the posterity of our city.
Thank you.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Morris. All right, yes, oh, sorry, Alderwoman Larson.
And just to clarify a little bit further, while some of the errors are what I consider basic grammar, there are some in the two months or two meetings that we got, there was votes, I have no idea what we voted on. There's nothing before or after. And then figures, but I'm not sure, are they dollars? Are they pounds? What are they? And remarks that started and the sentence is just cut off. So it's, it's not that we're trying to be picky, but it has to be clear and it has to be correct because sometimes we'll go back a year later like, well, what exactly do we vote on? If we only have these minutes, there was votes and we have no idea what we voted on. And, and the final thing is, the one home meeting, the resolution is strictly the number, not the sentence. You could pick it right off, cut and paste it off the agenda. It's just the number. So, okay, we voted on it, not a clue as to what it was. So we need, like I said, it's not a personal attack. It's as a city of DeKalb, we've had standards and they have to be maintained and they have to be clear and they have to be accurate. So no matter who sits or who's elected, this is the same thing we'd expect. Clarity, accuracy.
Alderwoman Morrison.
I just want to build on what Alderwoman Larson stated by pointing out that this is an Open Meetings Act violation for us to not produce the minutes in a timely fashion. And in addition to that, that opens up, that opens up the city to the risk of future litigation when we have no accurate record of what happened in the past. We have nothing to stand on in the future when someone says something happened or did not happen.
So I have a motion, oh, any others? I have a motion and a second to pull numbers one through four from the consent agenda. So I need roll call on that, city clerk?
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes. All right, so the motion passes to remove those items from the consent agenda. City attorney, help me out again. I always get confused in this part. We had a motion, a second, roll call to pull items one through four from the consent agenda. What's the procedure now for approving the remaining consent agenda?
Yes, at this point, you have created the consent agenda consisting of, consisting of the two items, number five and six. So we would just need to approve the items on the consent agenda. And as you usually do, it's usually best to read those, so it's-
You betcha, okay. So I'd like a motion from the floor to approve the modified consent agenda, which includes minutes of the joint review board of July 23rd, 2021, and accounts payable and payroll through November 8th, 2021 in the amount of $1,844,977.22. Can I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Roll call, city clerk, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Consent agenda passes. All right, so moving to agenda item H, public hearings. Number one, public hearing, 2021 annual property tax levy. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. This particular hearing is focused on the proposed 2021 city property tax levy for taxes payable in 2022. On November 22nd, we will have a public hearing on the aggregate levy, which includes the city and the library levies. And the wording will be just slightly different and the background, though, will be largely the same. To maybe focus in on the issues, I made available to the council a handout that was also given to the city clerk and this will be posted as, as we can. I'm going to walk the viewing public through it, if I may.
And point of order really quick, was I supposed to call the public hearing to, thank you, I'm getting a nod from Ruth. So I do want to call the public hearing to order? Or open the public hearing, I guess, at 6:15 PM tonight? All right, please continue, city manager.
Thank you. I'll just assume that what I've said is somehow in the ether, heading in that direction. Okay. So if I may, for the people who are viewing and don't have what I pulled together here just late this afternoon after we had some questions today about levies and rates and EAVs, which I think can easily confuse any economist or historian or, or financial expert unless they're handled on a pretty regular basis. So if you'll look at your, your handout and I'll attempt to walk you through this. So the top says, and for the people in the audience, viewing audience and with us present this evening, the city's property tax is what is our focus right now. The, the property tax has, the calculation of what's going to fall eventually on your tax bill has, is kind of a three-legged stool. There's the community wealth, which is known as the city's EAV, which for future reference, you should know is the same as the library's EAV. All the taxing bodies in the, in the community that have taxes that are listed on your tax bill that you get every year, we're the only two that have the same EAV. The counties is the largest, the school districts is maybe number two and so forth and so on. So how do we know what that wealth is? Well, every year, the township assessors and the county supervisor assessments take into account a couple of things. One is, is there going to be a multiplier, which is part of, I'm not going to get into the weeds on this, but it's part of the way that the state assessors equalize assessments across the county and across, across the state. So there's going to be an equalizer. For those who live in DeKalb County, which is most of the city of DeKalb, that is just a little under 2%. In fact, it's 1.0199, as close as you can get to 2%. Last year it was 4%. And it's important to keep in mind because even if your rate stays the same and the wealth grows, depending on what proportion, if there's a multiplier against your individual house's EAV, it may be that the level rate may result in a few more tax dollars paid. So when, when taxing bodies are looking at the result of their, their proceedings, they should keep that in mind. What's the, what are the other pieces? Well, there's, in addition to the multiplier, special attention is given to new construction that occurred in the assessment year. We have some remarkable new construction. And then one hybrid that is considered new construction for the sake of calculating our annual taxes, but it's kind of a one-of-a-kind. New construction takes the form of, say, new houses being built, new, new commercial and industrial buildings being built. But it falls on the tax rules upon occupancy. There has to be at least a temporary occupancy issued before that happens. Otherwise, there's something called a developer incentive, which allows them, while they're building, not to have to pay the taxes, which might be a disincentive against the construction itself. So what was the new construction in our community in the last year? The biggest contribution was from the Farrar Candy Company. And even with the 50%, 50/50 property tax abatement that was agreed by all the local taxing bodies, there was a significant increase of $11,735,000. Come on pointer. There it is. See that? $908.50. In addition, when you add up all the other new construction that reached the point of occupancy up to this point, when the books get, get finalized and the township assessors send the numbers forward to the county, about 3.2 million, that's still an estimate. And then there's one other big piece, bigger than all the rest combined. And that is the fact that TIF 1 is terminated at the end of December. And so there is a, quote, "recovery" of that EAV, which had been, we'll say frozen, we could argue about whether that's the right word, but having frozen since 1986. And that's going to contribute a lot of new wealth to the bottom line that, that is our community wealth. And that amount is 50, let me get the pointer again. There it is. $59,148,535. So the combination of all that new construction Multiplier with that and we get a new community EAV, which is a statement of our community wealth, one-third of the actual fair market value of 696,000, or excuse me, million, $563,133. So just under $700 million, which is a significant increase over where we were this time last year, which was in the vicinity of about 610 million. Okay, so why is that good? Well, if you look at the calculation of your property tax as a simple mathematical equation, the numerator is the EAV that we, the city, the taxpayer that is known as the city of DeKalb will call out. I have proposed $6,845,317. That's just under 5% more than last year's levy, okay, levy. Over almost 700 million, we see a rate decrease that's a little over 8% for the city. And why is that important? Because now that rate gets put on the tax bill and that rate is multiplied by all of your properties and everybody else's property, whether it's productive property or personal property. And if your EAV of your home, let's take a home, and I've given you a chart. If you look to the far right of this, if you're viewing, I've got three years, 2019, 20, and 21. And this is an imaginary house of around, of fair market value of around 300,000. It was a little bit under that in 19. There was a multiplier of about 3, 3.5% that year. There was a new EAV as a result of that, but then there's a homestead benefit exemption, which knocks it down a little bit. And so in 2019, that house, to the city only, paid a little over $1,100. Last year, council took into account that the multiplier is going to be about 4%, just a little bit over. And nothing else was added in the way of value, no new decks or addition or anything. And the homestead exemption's still, and we get over to the actual dollar amount that is paid. And the rate, by the way, went down, so the taxes went down, all right? This year, what we think we will see, if our guess is right about what the community-wide EAV is, we know what our levy's going to be, and as a result, our rate will go down again. And the tax dollars should be somewhere around $65 less than they were for that, for the city only, for that house. And if every taxing body looks at it this cleanly and closely, there should be a significant reduction. We don't know yet. Other taxing bodies are having these very same conversations. So I went into some detail here. I've also done it with the, the library, which I'll go down here. This is a sort of a preview. Library Board has voted, has recommended a, an EAV, or excuse me, a levy of 2.2 million, $700,708. And that's going to get a rate of about .38772. That's the same rate as in 2020. So let's see how that comes out. So same imaginary house. And we see that in 2019, the rate was higher, the, excuse me, the rate was a little bit lower. And the, the taxes due were about $369. And then in 2020, the rate was just a little bit higher and the taxes went up about $17. And even though the rate is the same as proposed by the library board, the actual out-of-pocket dollars will increase for that particular house. And that's just, that's just the math. That's how it works. So that's where we are. On the 22nd, the council will see the aggregate levy. So we'll pull together both the city and the library, which I've separated here, and that is another number. We will have a truth and taxation hearing on that because the combination of the two will be over 5% and it'll be about 7.3%. So we'll have to have a conversation about that. People will be welcome to come and speak to that. And then you'll have an ordinance that would be up for action on the city levy in December.
So before, questions from council? I didn't know if there was anyone here for the public hearing on this that had any comments they wanted to make? All right, hearing done. Council, questions for city manager? Or comments? I'm going to give you a minute to absorb. Yeah, Alderman Favor, thank you.
I would just say, you know, obviously, thank you to yourself and city staff for all the hard work to pull all these numbers and to put all this together. And then again, the whole team effort of, of working with, you know, our, our partners, with DCEDC and with the school board and making DeKalb attractive to business, to want to come here and invest in our community, which is beginning to have, we're beginning to see the fruition of their investment in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So clarification from me, new. So the, the city was able to lower our tax rate, which is one thing. Even though our levy is larger than last year, because the overall pool of Farrar and everything that you mentioned, the amount of dollars is larger. So the city is going to have more money coming in, I think it was 300,000-ish on its, on its actual levy, the dollars. But from an individual taxpayer's perspective, it's less money out of their pocket. And the reason is, because of all the economic development that has happened, that, that's why that math works out the way it does.
Correct. And so you might ask, well, what happens in years from now? We're not going to have a TIF going out of existence every year, especially not a big TIF like TIF 1. And the magic next year is probably Facebook. And in future years, there's Project Barb and so on. And these are phased, if they are phased developments where we can see ongoing, you know, other buildings, other land developed, all the better. It keeps the momentum going. And it also then becomes a magnet for other businesses, no question. So as a denominator grows, the individual taxing bodies can raise the numerator, which is the levy. But only so much. You still have to be careful. You have to do the math. And I guess that's the recommendation that we're making to everyone, is do the math and make sure that in our enthusiasm, the, the rate doesn't go up because the rate is what affects the individual taxpayers. All this stuff I did tonight, it won't make any difference if, when they get the tax bill next spring and they see that the rate, overall rate's gone up and the individual rates, some of them maybe not, but maybe many of them will. I don't, I hope not. Then they'll not be happy. They'll say, well, what's, what are we doing? What are we trying to do here?
And the whole point of economic development is to attract more people. And then that, that phrase, diversification of the tax base, this is a perfect example of diversification of the tax base for the individual resident ends up benefiting them from the city's perspective, what we did. In order to reduce the amount of dollars, we actually ask from their wallet, essentially. Can you, can you explain the, Alderman Verbic? Oh, I was going to say, can you, well, no, go ahead, Alderman Verbic, and I'll chime in, I'm sure.
What I was going to ask is pertaining to the library.
What I was going to ask is pertaining to the library levy. If we don't have the authority to question or receive justification on the amount for the library levy, why do we, why do we vote for it? It just doesn't seem proper that we vote for something, especially for me looking at, I'm looking at this total amount, comparing it to what we are trying to do with the city and, and I question, but I can't, I question, but I can't, that amount.
Yes, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. It's one of those oddities in the law where we have a library that is operated by a separate board that makes a request for its own tax levy that goes to us. And then we, by statute, are obligated to then levy that amount for them. You know, the normal course you expect is you have a taxing district, they raise their levy and they set their levy, and then they levy their own amount to the county. But for whatever reason, this is one of the oddities in, in the library district statute is that the local library statute requires that they kind of levy, give us their, the amount they want, and then we're obligated to levy that for them. So it's an unusual situation, it's not typical, but that's, that's why by statute we're obligated to, to make, make their levy, levy even though they're the ones that determine how they spend that money and what ultimately their request will be.
Thank you.
So, but, and the reason they're under, I say, I know it's statute, but what, what function does the City of DeKalb perform for the library that, that this is the, the case?
Well, the, the city appoints the board members, the city levies their taxes, and then once that levy comes in, they funnel it over to the library for them to spend based on their own budgets and, and recommendations and, and actions.
We perform some financial services and also are contributing toward the redemption of library debt.
And the, the reason why they don't do their own finances and we do? I know, I know it's statute, but what, what's the, why?
No, it's an arrangement that was made a long time ago. When I say a long time ago, I think it's been going on since before I was here first time in the nineties. It's a, oh, it's a practical consideration. At that time, the library was much smaller in terms of staff and would have cost more money to hire staff to run the, the numbers, so to speak, in a smaller unit entity than it was to have the city do it. At the time, we had a much bigger financial services staff and we said, well, let's do it. Not a lot of payables. Receivables are, are also not so various in type that we can keep up. Well, it's a little different now, and we have a much smaller staff and, and they have expanded some, but we, we continue to do it because I still think the numbers don't work out so well if we have duplication on that.
And does, and feel free to chime in, I just got more questions, but, so the, their levy, does that impact from the public's perspective, the overall appearance of what our, our rate and our levy is?
Yes, it does.
So we, we reduced our, we reduced our tax rate?
Today's phone calls are any example of what that is.
So, so we reduced our tax rate, the overall levy out of the public's pocket is less by the City of DeKalb, but with the fourteen percent increase in levy that the library is doing, that kind of washes out the, the goodwill that we created by what we did.
One thing we're always trying to do is to be here is transparent and clear about what the numbers are. And I've had some back and forth today with, with John and his colleague Matt Rose about how we do something called a black box notice. The state statute, and I don't know who conceived of this, creates some language that you're supposed to follow, no ups or extras, which is so damning and confusing, you could be giving money back by fifty-dollar bills to every taxpayer in town, it would still look bad because of the way it has to be written. So that any increase that you'll see in this black box notice will, to any thoughtful, reasonable person who, again, isn't dealing with levies and rates every day on a daily basis is going to say, holy cow, it's going up thirty percent. We're moving out of town. I mean, and we don't have the opportunity to have these conversations one-on-one with every neighborhood, every homeowner, every business owner, and it gets into the public domain and, and a few people stir it. And it's not right, it's not accurate, but it tells a tale. And that's what we saw here recently because somebody was taking information that was just recently made available through this agenda and was stirring it to make it look like this U had just raised the city levy fourteen percent. So I took some time tonight, I, I'm sorry, I took.
I appreciate that.
But I walked you through it.
It's important.
It's, it, this becomes, by the way, part of the record and you were talking about earlier, and I think it's important for people to know what your decisions are as we, on this especially.
Alderman, favor.
Well, I was just going to say, in terms of viewing the library, on your tax bill, I believe the library is called out separate from the city, though, correct?
It is, it is.
So at least you could track.
You can.
That way. You could, you could look at your bill from last year, you could see what the city charged, what you paid, library charged, you paid to the library, and then you could do the same this year. If you were doing your due diligence.
Right.
Which I hope everyone would do, you would see the city decreased, the library went up. Or the rate stayed the same, but your taxes went up.
And that's why I did this. I, I think I separated them both and then I also pulled them together and at the next meeting with a, a follow-on public hearing, it was slightly different, we're going to focus on the aggregate and what that means.
So, and I don't know, I have no idea what's happening at the library or the reason why they need to raise their levy, because it's almost like three hundred thousand dollars as well, right? Almost the same amount as the city.
It's a little bit more than the city's, yes.
Okay, so they're raising their overall dollars that they need this year compared to last year, more than the entire City of DeKalb. But again, I, I know this comes off as snarky and I don't mean it to be. I don't know what's going on there, but what, what I'm disappointed in is for years, we've been really focusing on economic development. This council has been doing that, and that's what attracts FARA and Facebook and all those here. And then by doing that, we also diversify the tax base to relieve the tax burden on individual residents. I'm really hoping more taxing bodies follow the, the lead that the City of DeKalb's doing right now because the pool is growing ever larger and like City Manager Nicholas said, next year, Facebook is going to come onto the rolls too. So the pool grows even larger. For us to continue to go back to the taxpayers for more and more dollars out of pocket right now, I, I can't understand it, and that's why I'm sure there's a great reason for it. I just, I can't get my head around it. So it'll be up to me as an individual citizen definitely reaching out to the library for further explanation. But, but a further piece on that, correct me if I'm wrong, we, so we're, we're doing the finances for them, so we're helping them out there, which I love government helping each other out and being efficient in our resources, absolutely. But aren't we also paying four hundred and fifty or five hundred thousand dollars a year of the expansion of the library, that debt, the bonds, that we pay out of our general fund in order to help the library out as well?
That's correct.
Yeah. So I guess my, my parting thoughts are and comments, I hope all the taxing bodies throughout the City of DeKalb do look to the example that the City of DeKalb set. I, I really hope that all these years of hard work and when it's finally paying off of the economic development that we have, that individual taxpayers are going to start seeing some relief, so.
Two quick thoughts.
Yeah.
The, the difference of sixty thousand dollars, that's still a sizable amount of money for a small taxing body, but sixty thousand dollars would have brought that as a tax decrease. So it's in the numbers and it's just a matter of doing some calculations. And last thing I'll say, we work with the, the Kalb County Economic Development Corporation, which is often the first local entity that's contacted by a national or an international company looking to locate somewhere in the upper Midwest. And oftentimes, the DCEDC, as they're known, performs a very valuable role as a clearinghouse of information. Can you give us some of this information? How about your labor rates? How about, how about access to an interstate and, and water and all of that? And, and we then get called in, and Paul and I work very collaboratively in this way, and we end up providing a lot more detail as time goes along. We're dealing with one that just came in at the end of last week. I worked over the weekend on some responses to them with Paul, and my job is to look at the tax rate. I said, Paul, I got this, I'm right in the middle of this stuff, I'm happy to do it. Look at the history of DeKalb's rates, the composite of all the taxing bodies as well as ours. What this company is especially interested in is not necessarily what they find right now as say that the 2020 rate for the taxes just paid in this past year, but they want to see, is there a break in this? What's the trend line? Is the trend line this way? Is it flat or is it slightly down? And it, they, they can read our, our webpage, they can look at our budget, they can understand where we are to the penny. So it's very important if we're going to land, if we're going to get in the top five or top 10 of those competitions, that we have a good story to tell on this score.
Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Burbick.
So then, are what we saying that the levy for the library could be any amount in the future and we could say nothing? So what, what is the limit to this? Do we know?
I think in the long run, you've done what you can do tonight, and I, the Library Board is all reasonable people who are thoughtful and care about the community and are participating, you know, on their, on their own time to contribute to the health of this particular institution. And I know they're listening and I, I know that they care and that, so what you can do is have this conversation. It's not anybody, it's not about the good and the bad, it's about, let's, let's sharpen our, our focus, particularly on this. There's, there's nothing that affects the individual taxpayer more than that darn tax bill. And we, these discussions in the months in the fall are so pivotal in that way and they just have to, all of us have to look at it really hard.
Well, and for me, it, I know we don't have the authority, but I will be voting no unless it's at six percent like last year or lower. So it would be great to hear more about the needs of the library and, and where this amount comes from, but I can't justify this level of increase. I'm accountable to the taxpayers of Ward Six, and I've heard nothing but not support of this. So that's where I stand.
Alderwoman Larson.
Here's your last dilemma. If all of you wanted to vote no, we'd be in a pickle because we wouldn't have any taxes. So we have to, we have to find a way somewhere in between to work on this.
Alderwoman Morse.
I just want to put in a good word for the library. So, you know, my experience as a parent in this community, the library is the only place that you can go with young kids that has an indoor play space, period. You know, there was a McDonald, there's a McDonald's play space and that's it. That's the only alternative. And I'm not just talking about little kids. We have a teen center at the library. There are numerous, countless offerings that the library is doing. I don't know what their budget is comprised of completely, but the things that they do in this community are irreplaceable and not something that any other organization or entity is providing. You know, if you look at the kids who come here after school and see who's here, you recognize, what's the alternative? Where would they be if they weren't at the library? And where would you rather have your children be after school if you're not going to be able to be there for them? So I just want to make sure that we're recognizing the unique offerings that the library has. If you look at all the offerings they have, there's always something new and amazing and educational. And when my children were young, we were here, you know, multiple times a week, so.
Yeah, and like I said, I, I don't know what's going on. I'm literally just asking the questions because it's such a huge amount that is just concerning. Yes, Alderman Burbick.
And I agree with all of that, but the reality is our population has declined by nine percent. So the view of the services that would be needed at our public library would be based on a population that's decreased by nine percent. So I don't, that's why I struggle with this, that's all.
But if use has gone up, that may compensate for that.
Right.
Alderman Perkins.
One of the issues I, I struggle with is just the, the process. So we have a process here where essentially we got mailed notification of what their budget was going to be with no voice from them. So here, here we sit and we're the ones who have to rationalize to the public why their budget's going up fourteen percent on this, when, when we've done everything we can to squeeze down our, our side of things.
Yeah, so.
So I guess.
I'm sorry, please.
So what can we do with the process to engage them, to explain some of this to folks, to understand why their piece of the pie needs to go up?
I think you, you've talked about this winter having some meetings with other taxing bodies, and I think that, that would be a natural. We, we're the same, we're, we play in the same backyard, it's the same EAV, it's the same, you know, our dresses are just two blocks away. So I think we could do that, I think it could be amicable, of course. I, I can tell you that I, through this process and the three years that I've been doing it in DeKalb, I have talked to the, my counterpart with the library. I had a meeting with, with her and with two members of the board on October 15th and laid out, it's not for me to tell the board what the numbers ought to be, but I shared all of the EAV numbers and said, you know, here's, here's a range. And the number that was discussed at that time is, was lower than the number was finally proposed to us to carry through. And okay, the board's voted, so that's it, I bring it through. But it was about sixty thousand dollars lower.
Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Burbick.
And the comment, my comment of, of people moving away, that's one of the reasons why people are giving that they're moving away is because the taxes are high and they don't feel that the tax level is at a value for their quality of life. So I, I think that's why it's important for all of us to look at it.
And your current point city manager, it is, after the first of the year, we do need to start all those conversations with all the taxing bodies where how can all of us, instead of individual silos, how can we pull together, act as one taxing body in, in spirit for the entire city in order to see how we can reduce rates, reduce levies, or at least increase that pool of dollars that are out there through economic development that's going to drive more revenue, but make sure that it's not continuously at the cost of the taxpayer too. So I'm looking forward to having some of those conversations. Oh, Alderwoman Larson, sorry.
And, well, this just came to me. Is there some way that we can request at next year's that there's a library representative here? I, I mean, I think that's part of it too, it's just like, take it or leave it, and we have no one to question because there might be absolutely legitimate, perfect reasons we'd all go, oh, okay, we see that, but there's nobody here. And so I, I find that kind of not good. That's what I would like to request if we could at next year's.
Yeah, no need to request. In fact, I, I would bet that we'll have somebody here next meeting.
Even better.
Any other comments or questions, council? Yes, Alderwoman.
Just to clarify, the library board is open to the public, right? It's an open meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, so.
We can go there.
Yeah, we probably should have been there.
All right, hearing nothing else? We just closed the public hearing then, right? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:48 PM. All right, so, glasses. All right, moving on to agenda item I, considerations, we have none. And then moving on to resolution, or I'm, agenda item J, resolutions number one, resolution 2021-096, authorizing a second amendment to a retainer agreement for city attorney services. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm pleased to bring this forward. We've gotten very good service from Donnie, you and Rose in the past year and actually since their original contract back in June 2019. Amendment, an amendment was brought to the council back in January, not quite a year ago, still in the depth of COVID, COVID pandemic, and this was at the initiative of our attorneys who wanted us to reduce their, our costs for their services per month, and we were grateful for that at the time. They, they could be, like many companies, trying to catch up now, but instead they've proposed that we retain that lower retainer amount, fifteen thousand a month. that we retain that lower retainer amount, 15,000 a month, but raise their litigation hourly rate from 185 to 190, which is still a bargain in business if you're familiar with legal services, particularly the very adept way that they have handled a couple of really difficult legal challenges that we've had in Hunter Properties, being one.
And I don't have my usual point of order, Alderman, on top of things. A resolution I was supposed to call, I have a motion and a second, correct?
I would wait.
Yeah, right. So we'll do it a little reverse. I will take a motion to bring Resolution 2021-096 to the floor.
So moved, second.
All right, it was moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Perkins. I greatly apologize for that. I'm just kind of wrapped up in the moment. We heard your comments. Public heard your comments.
Yes.
It's being recorded by our city clerk, so I assume we're good. So any comments from counsel for the city manager or questions? Yeah, Alderwoman Morris.
I just want to speak in favor of this as I too have been impressed with the service that we've received and, you know, have loved the way that they've offered us many options with every unique situation that's come up and their help has been invaluable.
I agree 100%. Nope, nope. It's only during public comment. So I agree. I've had a great experience with the city attorney as well. All right, hearing no other questions or comments, will you roll call right on resolution? Yeah, roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbeck.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight i's, zero n's.
All right, the resolution passes. All right, moving into Resolution Number Two. Resolution 2021-097 authorizing the expenditure of $600,000 in motor fuel tax MFT funds for the city of DeKalb portion of the Twombly Road reconstruction project as administered by DeKalb County. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor. City manager.
I think you've probably noticed the construction work that's been going on on Twombly through the summer into the fall. And I'm happy to say that the work is essentially done. There are some punchless items still, but you can see what we've long, long been waiting for. There's not only a good driving surface, but there's a bike path on the south and a sidewalk on the north side. And that sidewalk will be continued next year along the west side of Annie Glidden up to Dresser and then at, under the safety of the traffic signal there across to connect with a path that we're going to be working on, continue to work on this fall so people can get to the high school on some kind of a hard surface and not walk in the street. So our share of this was 600,000. We've got to approve this tonight to get the contractor paid.
Counsel. Hearing nothing? I know everyone in that area is extremely excited about this. So just a fantastic project all the way around and long, long overdue. All right, I will take a roll call. City clerk, please.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbeck.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Eight i's, zero n's.
Resolution passes. All right, for Resolution Number Three, Resolution 2021-098, I'm going to recuse myself and have Alderman Favor just run this section of the meeting.
Item Three, Resolution 2021-098, authorizing the city manager to sign agreements for insurance coverage effective January 1, 2022 to December 31, 2022 in an amount not to exceed $500,000, $54,523. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So motion made by Alderman Verbeck, seconded by Alderman Morris. City manager.
Thank you. As you can see in the background, we are proposing a departure from a firm that had served us well for a number of years. We had been working with Gallagher for about 14 years and opted to test the market this year. It's a little longer than normal for professional services. And we did so. A notice was circulated. We solicited sealed proposals by October 15th. Gallagher did not submit a proposal, but proposals were received from Corkle Insurance and Crum Hallstead. Corkle just briefly wasn't able to submit a proposal that included all the requested insurance coverages. There was a workaround that they had proposed, but we looked, as we were looking at the proposals, much harder than at Crum Hallstead Agency of Sycamore, which submitted a very competitive and all-inclusive proposal at a total cost in the next year of $554,523, which is a bit of a savings. And also it does bring with it, I think, comparable and very competent professional assistance on the risk management side. They'd be working with ICRMT, which is the acronym for the Illinois County's Risk Management Trust, which has a long history. It's a pool, it's a risk pool. Their brand is very widely recognized and respected among local governments in Illinois. And it happens that they are much esteemed by Sickich, our audit team, and also by our attorneys. There's considerable background here. There's a chart on your page seven that shows the breakdown. As is often the case, the risk management firm doesn't have airport fuel tank liability coverages, so they go out and they find that it affected the subcontractor to provide those, which they've done. We ask that you approve the bid as presented. In our audience tonight, we are pleased to have Ted Rosenau and Pat Fagan from Crum Hallstead and Bill Spring from IPMG in case you have any detailed questions about their proposal.
Any comments? Alderman Verbeck.
A question, I may have missed it in the backup. Employer's liability is $2.5 million. Is that in total or per instance? And where are we at today? What's our liability today?
Two good questions. I'm going to defer. Do you want to take that, Josh?
We should have, we should have Pat and Ted for this discussion.
I may go with Pat.
I'm going to let Bob Spring, because it's his policy, so I'll let him.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Bob Spring. I'm with IPMG, we're the administrator for the ICRMT. So to your question, the employer's liability limit is two and a half million per occurrence. So that's easier. That is not the workers' compensation. What you're probably most commonly seeing for workers' compensation claims, that limit is statutory, meaning whatever is deemed compensable.
Just for whatever is being quoted here today, you know, where are we at today? What's our level in our existing agreement?
It's a 2.5 or lower. We're not bringing it down. As a matter of fact, we are not bringing it down less than what you had before.
Which is how much?
I don't have to turn policies.
That's what they asked for, 2.5. That's what the city asked for and that's what we're asking.
Okay.
So I'm assuming it was 2.5.
I'd like to find out if that's possible.
We can do it. Michelle Anderson, our HR director is here and maybe Michelle, I hate to put you on the spot, but internally, Michelle is year in and year out, the person who's most familiar with this coverage.
I believe the current one, and Josh probably has it in the bid there, was 1.5 million is the current employer liability.
Per occurrence?
I believe that's the current one. Josh would have that with the bid that he has there.
Yeah, I'm digging it up now in the bid specifications. I'm trying to locate it.
Okay, so was 1.5 requested or 2.5?
I believe 1.5 is the current employer liability. I believe this is for 2.5.
Okay, thank you.
To answer your question, the program automatically has a 2.5.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments, questions? Roll call.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbeck.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Seven i's, zero n's.
Motion passed.
Yes.
Thank you.
City clerk, yes, for me, do.
Oh, I apologize.
All right, thanks, Alderman Favor. All right, moving on to Number Four. Resolution 2021-099 approving an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement with the DeKalb Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge 115 Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council for the period from January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2022. Can I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This item and Item K1, the second reading ordinances are related, of course. Just very briefly run through what this is about. So on August 9, I brought forward a staff proposal for a civilian police review board. That was not something that had just been created in the weeks preceding the meeting. It had been a conversation that had been going on for well over a year. And we had the benefit of contributions from many organized groups and individuals who were very much involved in the streets and rallies and in this room and in other forums talking about the possibility of such a board. On September 13, I brought back after the council had recommended that we proceed to an ordinance, an ordinance that actually was a little different than the original proposal in several respects. One with the further recommendation from the Human Relations Commission and others. We required the chief of police in this ordinance draft to consult with the new board once an internal investigation was complete, but before making any recommendation for discipline. And also the draft that was before the council for first reading back on September 13th provided for an informal public hearing of citizen complaints in public session, but complainants needed to present signed and written complaints of their concerns. And on September 10, which was just before, it was after the agenda was published, but before that meeting, the city received a formal demand to bargain over the proposed citizen review board from the Illinois FOP Labor Council. And our first bargaining session was held on September 21st. And at that time, FOP Labor Council presented two concerns and it was about the relevance of a certain passage in the, which I talk about later in the background for you. And they were concerned that a sworn officer could be ordered to appear before a review board against his or her will and that the board, they were concerned about the board maintaining confidentiality of both active and pending disciplinary proceedings until a discipline was imposed in relation to state statutes such as the Uniformed Police Officers' Disciplinary Act. And that also in the event that discipline was imposed by the chief, that the proceedings of the board should not be publicly released until any subsequent grievance or arbitration rulings are final. It's important for people who know, may not know about collective bargaining agreements or in this case, our particular FOP agreement. It does provide for appeal of discipline. It can go through internally, through, in this case, it might be probably appealing the chief's judgment. It could go to me and then it can go to arbitration if that's the route. Or it can go possibly to the board of fire and police commissioners. There are various options here. They wanted to make sure that that was in play before a discipline was imposed. So collective bargaining ensued. We had a session, as I mentioned, on the 21st and then we had some back and forth by email and which is, I guess you would call virtual bargaining and then on, in person on October 15th. And it was at that point that we reached tentative agreement on just revisions to one place in the collective bargaining agreement. I have gone to considerable detail to show you what the before was and what the after would be if you were to approve this. And one thing that I think is important to note, as we boil this down, and I've done that on page 10, is that the proposed citizen police review board is a quasi adjudicative body that's subsidiary to you, the corporate authorities. You appoint members of the board. It must conduct its inquiries or hearings in a manner consistent with the Uniformed Police Disciplinary Act and the Illinois Labor Relations Act. In other words, with established state law. You don't get to trump that in any, excuse me, because we don't use any, we don't get to supersede that. Any formal investigation or informal inquiry, which is what these would be, conducted by the city before that, needed to conform to those state definitions. No police officer, according to the change, can be subjected to proceedings before the board or be compelled to appear against their will. And that is understandable and that's not something that you could order as a corporate authorities. Now, a police officer can be ordered to cooperate with an investigation, but doesn't have to be, can't be ordered to appear before that board or the Human Relations Commission or any of your other commissions. They can do certainly, they can do this certainly on their own. They can say, you know, I've nothing to hide. I think I did the right thing. I'm happy to talk with you and to present my view of whatever happened. And then finally, that the identity of a police officer involved in an administrative hearing and all the records that relate to that proceeding can be shared with the citizen police review board, but in executive session until such time as a discipline is imposed. After that, all the proceedings become public, whether the discipline is upheld or not. So it's a, it comes, boils down to, in my opinion, you may have a different opinion, a timing issue. When does the public get to know and how does the public participate through the people that are representing them on the board? And the board gets to participate, the same as according to the collective bargaining agreement provisions that we've tentatively agreed on at the staff level. They get to still have that conversation with the chief before any decisions made about recommending discipline or whether discipline at all is in order. That is before you tonight. It's been, the language that is before you in detail has been ratified by sworn officers in our police department who are members of the FOP Lodge 115 and we recommend your approval.
City counsel. Alderwoman Morris.
So I apologize if I overlooked it, but when can we hope that this would, you know, happen? If we all vote yes today?
Tonight. Well, oh, I'm sorry, tonight, we would, the next item is the ordinance to actually implement the citizens review board. So when that happens, if we agree to that, then the CRB is officially, will be written into the laws of the city of DeKalb and then we'll form the actual board itself and the members that'll be on it.
No, hang on, it is, well, you signed up for K1, which is the actual approval of the
citizens review board. This is a contract negotiation language, so.
I asked her this information beforehand.
You'll be able to speak on K1 before we approve anything about the citizens review board, just like your public participation required or asked for. This is something else. Yeah, so that will be the next one that we'll go ahead and have that discussion, Carolyn. This was the language in the police contract.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
So any other questions or comments on this agenda? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Verbeck.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes. All right, now we have...
Eight i's, zero n's.
Resolution passes, thank you. So now we have Agenda Item K and Agenda Item One where we have two public comments, but first I have to have a motion and bring it to the floor and then we'll have public comment. All right, so ordinance 2021-040, amending the municipal code by adding a new chapter 46, citizens police review board. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Perkins. All right, now we'll have public comment. I've got Harvey Blau. Moved by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman Perkins. All right, now we'll have public comment. I've got Harvey Blau.
Yes, thank you. I'm Harvey Blau. I've lived in DeKalb and worked in DeKalb for over 50 years. This is my first city council meeting. I'm here as an individual, and I'm also representing an informal group called Praying With Our Feet, a group of, an informal group of local Jewish residents of the DeKalb area who are, have been interested since the summer of 2020 in helping to implement productive and positive changes in structures that will further social justice in the community. So I'd like to thank City Manager Nicholas and Police Chief Byrd and Mayor Barnes and the entire city council for bringing the prospect of a citizens police review board to this point. I think it's really a very good step in the right direction, and we're hoping for for the completion of this ordinance, the resolution of this ordinance. I would like to read part of an email that Irene Rubin, a member of our board, sent to the city council, and I believe City Manager Nicholas and Police Chief Byrd today.
And Harvey, real quick, it's my fault. It's Mayor Barnes. We have three minutes for comments. And I always, I really try and be fair and hold everyone to that. So go ahead and read, please. You've still got plenty of time.
I will read quickly. "The last time the proposal was brought up, there were some changes due to the insistence of the Fraternal Order of Police. The changes are primarily for the purpose of clarifying the ways that state laws protect police. While these are mainly requirements that we would observe anyway, they do underscore a problem that we will have to pay attention to going forward. That is, the requirement that all ongoing inquiry into complaints must be kept completely confidential until such time as the judgment has been reached and appeals exhausted. The result could be a considerable time gap during which the interested and affected public will have no idea if their complaints are being taken seriously and are being thoroughly and impartially investigated. We may need to think of ways to keep the public informed and keep the time lapse between submission of a complaint and its resolution as short as possible, commensurate with fairness, thoroughness, and accuracy. One approach is to release minutes of closed sessions of the citizen review board as soon as feasible, with minimal redactions as required by law. Passing this ordinance, creating a civilian police review board, is a good step toward improving the relationship between the community and the police for the benefit of both. Going forward, we need to assure that the board is independent, its decision-making is transparent with a permanent public record, and that its recommendations are fair and constructive to all concerned." Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey. I appreciate it. All right, then I have, it says Ryan, Ryan?
Yeah, I never really called you my last name. I really shouldn't have to be here.
Okay, but you can come to the, or come to the podium. And again, just to remind you, you have three minutes.
You know, I, as a victim of race discrimination at the hands of Bill Nicholas, everything that's happened to me, what I was reporting, it's been a terrible experience. I'm a homeowner in the city of DeKalb, and the way I've been treated by council members, Bill Nicholas, John Donahue, I mean, these are city attorneys, and they won't respond. You guys won't respond in writing. There's accountability here. I heard words like accountability to taxpayers and due diligence. You know, I'm a college graduate, and I don't know how to participate in this stuff. And when I ask for information, I expect to receive it as a homeowner. I contacted your office, Mr. Mayor, countless times, telling them about wrongdoing by Bill Nicholas, official misconduct. I'm being prevented by the new chief of police, several past chiefs of police, from even receiving a police report. Now, I know John Donahue. You guys just approved him. You said how great he is. Well, I want to know in writing. How is that possible, that a Hispanic resident, I mean, if I can't get assistance, if I can't get people like the mayor or council members or the city manager, not to, the city manager is telling me to shut up. He's telling me on the phone to shut up. He's saying he doesn't care what I'm reporting when I'm saying I'm reporting race discrimination. He shakes his head. That's what an investigation is for. That hasn't happened. In front of you is a complaint that he filed in retaliation. And this is not something that the chief of police doesn't know about, the current chief of police. And I'm accusing him as well as everybody else in the council, everybody, of race discrimination, targeted race discrimination against Hispanics. There was an elegant speaker just before me, talking about what I was worried about with this review board. You guys created it. You have no business creating this review board. This is something that should have been, talking about transparency, I can call every one of you out. I contacted every one of you, except for exception of one, but every one of you was told to place your council, the entire council, by me, I noticed of what I was reporting. This resulted, everything that I'm saying can be verified. The way I've been treated by the county, the way my mother was treated by the county. This was a Hispanic senior citizen that was defrauded out of thousands of dollars, and she couldn't even receive a police report from Roger Scott. When we complained about him, we were retaliated against. The retaliation resulted in the death of my mother at Northwestern Medicine. That hasn't been occurred. There was a HIPAA violation. It's been, it's just, there's no way I can condense everything that's happened to me and my family that's affected my two disabled brothers. There is corruption in Lee County and DeKalb County. The state's attorney was even, I was even told by Jerry Smith, the former mayor, that Rick Amato had told him to ignore my complaints. This is wrongdoing, official misconduct.
We appreciate it. Your time is up, sir. That was three minutes. Appreciate you coming for counsel and letting us know. All right, City Manager.
We're on ordinance second reading.
Yes, ordinance second reading, Agenda Item K1.
Thank you. So it's important, I think, just to note in this regard that the ordinance was revised. There's a redlined version in your background that shows the changes that were made that are consistent with the action you just took to amend the collective bargaining agreement. Passages are highlighted so that you can see specifically what has changed. And we recommend with that, with those changes, that you proceed to approve the citizens police review board. It was changed, to summarize what I said earlier, that it identifies the importance of recognizing as a Boy Scout group going on.
It is, yeah, Cub Scout PAC meeting, yeah.
Yeah, that's right. The fact that there are state laws that do apply to how we conduct ourselves at the local level, whether in quasi judicial adjudicative hearings or in this room, so we're just trying to square up with that.
Council, questions, comments? Alderman Morris.
So I might not have been asking the right question the right way when I asked it earlier, and I, yeah. So my question is, because I didn't see this in the content, like, when will you start appointing people to it? When can we hope that the board, like, you know, happens? That's what I mean.
I'll bring all five members to us at the next council meeting for appointment and your approval.
The next one in two weeks? That's very exciting. Thank you.
Yes, Alderman McAdams.
So I wanted to say, if you had asked most people after the murder of George Floyd, if we thought we could ever get to this point where we were ready to pass a citizens review board on second reading, most would have agreed that it's unlikely, and it takes all of us to bring about big changes. So I want to acknowledge the contributions of the Black Lives Matter movement, Rennell Brown, the local praying with our feet group, Larry Apperson, John Walker, Lisa King, Nadine Franklin, Joe Gastager, Norton Gilbert, David Barrow, J.J. Watt, as well as Commander Reddell, Chief Byrd, Matt Rose, and Bill Nicholas. It took the effort and energy of all of these good people in war, working together for a common goal. They stayed committed to an honest review of law enforcement and have given the city an opportunity for an unprecedented level of transparency and accountability for years to come, and I look forward to voting yes.
Thank you, Alderman McAdams. Any other comments? Hearing none. Roll call.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Excellent. A lot of time, a lot of energy went into this, so it's nice that we have this on the books. And like I said, I'll be bringing members before you for approval on next council meeting, and we can get this thing going. All right, moving on to Agenda Item L, ordinances first reading. Number one, Ordinance 2021-044, authorizing the 2021 levy and 2022 collection of taxes in and for the corporate and municipal purposes in special service areas of the city of DeKalb for fiscal year 2022. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman McAdams, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Both this ordinance and the next ordinance, which are related, should be held only, should be voted only on first reading tonight, and we will hold them over until after the second follow-on hearing that I've been describing through the evening tonight, which will come up on the 22nd. This one, as you can see now, gives a little bit of form to what we're trying to do here. If you look at the table on the bottom of page 12, you see what our tax, property tax levy will cover. It is a portion of the fire pension obligations we have, a portion of the police pension obligations. It will not cover, we are going to abate, which you will see in the next ordinance, all of the library debt obligation that we have. So our, that 6.8 million levy from the city consists of the police and fire pension dollars. But when you add the public library pass-through levy, you see we go from 8,888,834 dollars in 2020 to 9,546,025 dollars, an increase of 657,191 dollars, or 7.49% for the combined or aggregate levy. That's what we'll talk about and we'll have a hearing on at the next regular meeting. Another thing you should be aware of, as you ultimately levy taxes for the city of DeKalb, we have some special levies which don't fall on individual taxpayers if they're not part of the special service area. But there are special geographical areas where with the agreement of at least 51% of the property owners, some special taxes raised to perform some special duties. Example might be keeping up the landscaping and the mowing and cul-de-sacs in a residential subdivision that never had a homeowners association and wanted to look nice, has been asking the city to look, we don't have the staff, we don't have the, it'd be cheaper to do it if we were subcontracting that out. And so you see some of those on page 13 in your background. Another thing, two other things of note. Last year, the council approved two new special service areas. One was the Market Square for the repair of the common paving areas, mostly the inner pathways for vehicles. And then Hunter Ridge Brook, excuse me, which is mostly the external part of that. But also included in that was an additional parcel which we own, which is where 912 Edgbrooke Apartments used to be. And there's still some transformation to occur there. We put grass mats down, as you know, this year, mowed the grass that came up. But we're hoping to work collaboratively with the Park District in some kind of park development or something. We'll have some discussion about that. Greek Row is coming alive, so there may be some other things we can do there, too. So that's this particular levy. That's the 2021 levy and the 22 collection of taxes in and for our corporate municipal purposes. Boom. So if you like what you see, and I don't think I can propose it any other way after what we've discussed tonight, then I would recommend you approve this on first reading only.
Alderman Morris.
I want to ask a question about Market Square, so I've noticed.
Yes. Yeah, so one thing we have to be careful of, we pitched this that we're going to focus on the entry drives, the interior driving surfaces, not necessarily the parking. That might be the proprietary responsibility of the particular vendor, whether it was Walmart or Lowe's or whatever. And there is a limit to what you can expect to, what you would need for that and what you'd expect to ask them to pay. And by the time we got the first tax, so first year of this year, we didn't get the taxes until later in the year. And actually, with all the things we've been doing paving-wise, we didn't get to go in there with, like, a blitzkrieg and fix it all. But we can next year because now we have, but we don't need more than a quarter million dollars to do that, so that's why we knocked it down. And then we'll see what we need for maintenance as time goes on. And we do that in trust, and you may recall when we did the hearing on this, we said that, we'll try to be reasonable. With Hunter Ridge Brook, we had charged the, about what the state law allows us, or not charge, but to set a levy at about what we could. And we, again, we didn't get the money so we could do something. We're starting to spend a little of that money. So we tacked on 50,000. I think that's probably reasonable. We're also aware that there is interest in, by other parties right now, and so we're trying to be reasonable. We can still heighten these levels next year if we finally need to, up to, I think it's 5% of the EAV, John, is that the max we can?
The maximum is in our approving ordinance.
Yeah, I think it was, that's what it was. So we can always come back the next year and close the gap if we have a gap.
Okay, so we'll finish Market Square next year, and that'll be like the other side, because it seems like we did half of the driveway.
Yeah, yeah.
The really bad part, yeah. That was vicious.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. That answers my question.
Alderman Smith.
And off of what Alderman, Morris asked, what about the entranceway off of Barbara Green Road? Is that included?
Yeah.
In this? It is, okay. And how about some of the electrical work? That, we've got a couple poles that have been down, I think, for, I don't know, 10 or 12 years.
Could be, could be, could be. Depends where you're thinking. If there are electric poles, if there are poles in the middle of the parking, I'm not sure. But poles along the avenues, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
No.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Seven ayes, one nay.
Me, too.
Oh, Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven ayes, one nay.
So the ordinance passes. What, on first reading?
First reading only.
Yes, sorry, sorry, I'll clarify. On first reading passes. All right, so again, another ordinance on first reading, Ordinance 2021-045, abating the 2021 tax levy for the debt service of the general obligation corporate proposed bonds of the city of DeKalb. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman McAdams, City Manager.
Yes, the city has some general obligation debt, which means we pay out of our property tax for bonds that were entered years ago, far back as 2010, and they're enumerated on page 14. I also remind the council that last year, in order to protect the general fund reserve, we did a refunding bond in 2020 that allowed us to scoop and toss all of the GO debt service that we owed, the 1.8 million plus to later years in '28, '29, and '30, when the composite annual debt amount is getting lower and lower and lower so we could absorb it. And actually, it would be like, if we get to that point, if we don't go after any more general obligation debt, we would be paying in '28, '29, and '30 about half what we're paying today or less. So we could digest that. In any case, that was a nice year, a nice hiatus. It's back. We still, we owe that 1.8 million roughly. And on page 15, you'll see what we, how we intend to do it. Basically, we're abating some and levying some others. So we're abating the library debt. We're paying that out of general fund sources. The TIF bond is now redeemed, so no more of that out of the TIF fund. But the other levies will go forward. These are debt service levies and are considered separately from the operating. So it lines up as it. from the operation. So, it lines up as it did before 2020. We're back. We're doing the same stuff. We're paying off debt that we took on for different things, like the police station. We had refunded some bonds years ago. We've done some things over time that made sense, and we're still obligated to pay for.
Counsel. Alderman Verbic.
Mayor, to your comment earlier, shouldn't the library pay debt with library general funds versus the debt being paid with city general funds? Or am I missing something? Can we politely ask, what's the process for resolving debt and, you know,
Here's our.
The entity for accruing it, et cetera?
I don't think any of us were here, serving in our current roles, back in 2012 or '13. But at that time, the city council, your forebears, thought it was important to help with the construction of the addition, on which we're having our meetings. And there were constraints at the time, there were debates, which I only read about from afar, about can we do this much, what do we have to cut, so forth. At some point, the mayor and city council at the time stepped up and said, well, we'll come up with some money, we'll help out. And the debt service came to about $490,000, $495,000 a year. This will continue until 2033. So, excuse me, 2013 is when it was done, a 20-year bond. We're obligated to pay that. That's, those are the, that's what the bond indenture says.
To 2033.
Yes. That's what the bond indenture says, that we, the city, the corporate authority of the city of DeKalb. So, we could have that discussion, but that's where we are. Practically speaking, we have, and I think this probably was on, I'm only guessing, was on the minds of the council, the city has more sources of general revenue. We have sales and use taxes, a variety of fees, property tax, of course, and fines. The library has a few of those, primarily the property tax. So, if they were to take on the bond, and they probably calculated this at the time, then they would be asking for a higher levy, but, you know, then we have another kind of conversation. So, what's the balance? In my opinion, we're obligated to pay the bond, and what may be offered to us voluntarily is something else over time. But that's where we are.
Alderman Verbic.
I would appreciate that we see what could be done about this moving forward, because as much as our predecessors agreed to this, this seems outlandish in my view. That's just a cursory view. How can we bridge a gap that I envision? I don't know what that gap is at this point, but this is irresponsible, and I'll be voting no.
Alderwoman Larson.
I just have to agree with city manager Nicholas in that, okay, I agree, I don't want to be paying this out of our city's general fund. But, so the library, it's back to them, but then they're going to start doing the multiplier and the levies, and the tax bills are going to go up, which earlier in this meeting, we're all like, well, they're not joining our bandwagon, they're trying to lower it. So, somewhere between the city of DeKalb and the library, we owe this bill. And actually, according to Nicholas, it doesn't say city library, it says city of DeKalb. That's who's signed off on this bond. So, whether we like it or not.
We're on the hook.
We're on the hook. When we, even though we weren't sitting here when we set the hook, by us running for these positions, we accepted the hook. So, I guess, I don't really enjoy paying this. I don't think, I'm not happy with it, but I'd be less happy if the library then went from 14% to 25%, because then they'd have to cover it. That, to me, goes more against what this body wants to do.
Alderman Favor.
So, not being here in 2013, but being here in 2015, when this came up as well, there was also, there was a promise of fundraising by the library that would help close the gap. And those fundraising efforts fell short significantly. And that's also, you know, another kind of sticking point in this, is that there was, the city wasn't supposed to pay for all of it. It was, there was supposed to be a large community effort, a large fundraising effort to help offset this cost for this library, for our community. That's wonderful, and it does provide a great service to our community, but those fundraising efforts fell short. So, and again, that's kind of part of where we're at. And, you know, again, the lever that we have as city council, actually, it's the lever the mayor has, is the appointment of the board. So, I think, I think your city council is asking me to consider the appointments to the board.
Here and there. Alderman Verbic.
On top of which the promises made by all of those supporting this effort, how staff, we would, staff would not have to be added. The technology would
Correct.
Serve patrons much better, so costs would be contained long run. So, Alderwoman Larson, I agree with your point. If they were doing the work on the other end, which I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing responsible use of taxpayer dollars, I'm sorry.
Anyone else? I appreciate all the comments. With that, rule call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
No.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Seven ayes, one nay.
Ordinance passes on first reading. So now, moving on to item three, ordinance 2021-046, authorizing the Northern Illinois University annual contribution for integrated transit services. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Favor, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The agreement between the city and the university back in October 2018, as we were creating our integrated transit service, required that NIU contribute a minimum of 40% of the total costs associated with our fixed route transit expenses on an annual basis. And for the year ahead, that is an estimated $2,65,053.30. Recommend your approval.
City council? Seeing and hearing none. Rule call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance passes on first reading. All right, moving to agenda item M, reports and communication, council member, oh, what?
Mayor.
Sorry.
Can we have a second reading?
Oh, sure. Can I have a motion to wait a second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Perkins. This is to pass ordinance 2021-046 on second reading. Comments? Rule call, please.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
So the ordinance passes on second reading. All right, agenda item M, reports and communication, council member reports, starting with Alderwoman Larson, or Alderwoman Morris.
No report. Thank you.
Okay. Alderwoman Larson?
Just want to thank probably everybody in city hall and then some about getting these figures to us, about taxes and everything, and just making it as clear as you could possibly make it for somebody who's not into levies and EDAs and everything. So, thank you so much for your hard work.
Alderman Smith?
Just a special thanks to city staff for the demolition of a house that's been a thorn in the neighborhood on Davie Street. Nice-looking piece of grass out there right now. Thank you, Andy.
Alderman Perkins?
Well, I did vote yes on both of these, what I believe are library issues. I look forward to what we're going to do going forward, because it seemed like we have a real, I hate to use accountability gap, but we have an accountability gap, because we're being mandated to do something where we have no voice in doing it, and that's troubling. But I understand we do have to pay the bills. We have to honor the commitments we've made going forward, but I believe, I still believe we have an issue. I look forward to options to manage it.
Maybe, you know, setting up a meeting with them would be good, and I'd appreciate it if you could accompany me on that.
We'd like to.
Have those conversations. Sounds good. Alderman McAdams?
No report.
Alderman Verbic?
No report.
Alderman Favor?
No report.
For me, I was this last week or the week before at a conversation on poverty that Representative Keiker was putting on. It was a great event. There were representatives from about eight different entities, from the housing authority, to the mental health board, to the Sir Donald Foundation. And it was just a really good conversation about where things are at from a poverty perspective, a mental health perspective within, you know, our community, our county. And the state of Illinois is really looking for direct feedback, and not just feedback, they were looking for direct action items that they could take right back to the legislature and hopefully implement. So, it was, it was great. It went about two, two and a half hours, lots of good discussion. I think that's one of those conversations that probably could have gone on all night. But I appreciate Representative Keiker for putting on that conversation, and everyone that attended it. It was good. Then also, I just want to remind everyone, November 11th, Veterans Day. We have a great ceremony that's going to be happening at 10:30 a.m. at the Veterans Park, where the memorial clock is. And so, hopefully, I keep seeing it still tarp'd up, hopefully we're putting final touches on that, but that'll be a big reveal. So, I would appreciate any council member that can make it at 10:30 a.m. on Thursday, especially any veteran council member that can make it. I know it's during the day, so that does make it a little difficult, but it'd be great to have some representation out there so we can see the clock in all its glory. With that, city manager report.
None.
Okay. So then we've got to move. We do have a closed session, an executive session. So I will take a motion to exit regular session and move into closed session.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. Rule call?
Morris.
What? Oh, that's right. Yes, thank you. Every time. So we're going to move into executive session for the approval to hold an executive session in order to discuss workers' compensation as provided for in five ILCS 120/2 C12. Can we do the motion in second again, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor. Rule call.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, we are now in executive session. Thank you.